Okay.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the reorganization and regular meeting of the Land Use Board of the Township of Greenwich. Adequate notice at this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and that a notice was published in the Star Ledger on Express Times. Notice was posted on the municipal bulletin board in the Township Administration Building in Greenwich Township, New Jersey, and notice was filed with the Township Clerk. Our rules and procedures for virtual meetings is posted online and it has not changed, and we will stand for the flag salute.
We're doing flag salute?
Do we usually do it, or do we not usually do it?
Well, you don't have a flag. We have no flag to salute.
We haven't done it in the virtual meetings because we don't have a flag, so.
We'll pledge.
So now, I think John will take over the oath of office.
So I have to swear in a number of people, hopefully.
We need to do a roll call.
Well, no, we can't do a roll call till we have the board members sworn in. Right now, we don't have a full board. We probably have a quorum. Frank, what?
Can you forward the link again to Jeremy? He said he has a bad link. He can't get in.
He can go right onto the township website, Frank, and click. That's the best way to do it.
I'll tell him.
I'm gonna forward him as well.
Susanna sent oaths of offices, and I'm hoping that the following people received their oaths of office via email. That's Beam, Chiracello, Marqueta, Williams, Fiamma, Yak, Pestless, and Sherlock. Did anyone not receive an oath of office via email from Susanna today? Right, that's excellent. Now, because normally, if we were there in person, I would have sworn everyone in a group before the meeting even started. But because this is virtual, I have to see and hear you take your oath because I'm gonna have to notarize these tomorrow. So I'm gonna ask each person to read from their oath while raising their right hand. I'm gonna go. I'm going with your number three. I got Beam and Chiracello first, so you have some time.
All right, I got it. Okay, good.
Paul Beam, can you raise your right hand, and can you please read your oath?
I, Paul Beam, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of the office of Class One Regular Board Member of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Can you now sign so I can see you sign? Just pick up a pen, show me that you're signing, sign that oath, fill in your address later, and then scan it and email it to me and Susanna, and then.
Well, would that be it? So I have a blank one. My computer will not print the one that was forwarded to me?
Sign, listen, just sign a blank one with your name on it right now, and you can fill in the rest of the stuff before you scan it and email it to Susanna and me tomorrow. Once Susanna has collected all of them from everyone, she'll send me a whole package. I'll notarize them all, and I'll send it back to Susanna and to the Township Clerk.
John, a picture of it's fine too, right?
It would be better if you could scan it because we have.
I'd have to take a picture.
Okay, Frank, take a picture, and then either text or email the picture. Susanna will print it out. Okay, let's go with Joe. Joe, can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
You want me?
Can you read your oath?
Yes, I, Joe Fiamma, solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faithful and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and the states under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of the office of Class Four Regular.
Class Two, you should say.
No. We got the wrong person.
You got the wrong Joe. It's Class Four. That was Joe Fiamma.
No, I'm sorry. I'm on Joe. I'll tell you what. So let's go with Joe Fiamma first. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, I will continue.
So Class Four.
Office of Class Four Regular Board Meeting of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, congratulations. Can you sign your oath?
Yes, I will, and I'll send it over.
Yep, just start signing so I see your hand move. All right, there we go. All right, Joe Chiracello. Raise your right hand. And can you recite your oath?
Yes, I, Joseph Chicello, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Class Two Regular Board Member of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations to you, and can you please sign your oath?
Yes.
Okay, Frank Marqueta, are you ready?
Yeah, just so you know, I don't have a hard copy.
I understand, but listen. You're gonna raise your hand, say your oath, and you're gonna sign that thing I know you have. You get it?
Okay.
Great. Read your oath, please.
I, Frank Marqueta, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Class Three Regular Board Member of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, and you're gonna sign yours, and you're gonna take a picture of it, and get the picture to Susanna and me tomorrow. Bruce Williams. Can you raise your right hand and recite your oath?
I, Bruce Williams, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Class Four Regular Board Member of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations to you, and can you sign your oath? And next up is Bill Cunyak. Can you raise your right hand and recite your oath?
I, Bill Cunyak, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Alternate Number Two Board Member of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And congratulations to you, and can you also sign your oath?
I'm signing.
Okay, up next is Pam Pestless. Can you raise your right hand? And can you recite your oath?
I, Pam Pestless, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Alternate Three Board Member of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations to you, and can you sign your oath? And then last, but certainly not least, our new board member Andrea Sherlock. Can you raise your right hand and recite your oath?
I, Andrea Sherlock, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Alternate Number Four Board Member of the Land Use Board, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations to you, and welcome to the board, and could you sign your oath? Okay, so I'm gonna, the presentation of the board members for 2021, I'm not gonna state the names, but they're right in the agenda. They'll be in the minutes. That's everyone's class, and that's when your term expires. And this was done by Susanna in combination with Township Clerk Lisa Byrd. So if anyone thinks any of that is incorrect, please let Susanna and myself know. So at this point, Susanna, can you call the roll? We now have the entire board, the returning members, new members, and reappointments sworn in.
Paul Beam, Class One.
Present.
Joseph Chicello, Class Two.
Here.
Frank Marqueta, Class Three.
Here.
Ray Buckwalter, Class Four.
Here.
Bruce Williams, Class Four.
Here.
Kathy Cullen, Class Four.
Here.
Gary Hill, Class Four.
Here.
Joseph Fiamma, Class Four.
Here.
Mark Skudarian, Class Four.
Here.
Jeremy Blunt, Alternate One.
Here.
Bill Cunyak, Alternate Two. Pam Pestless, Alternate Three.
Here.
And Andrea Sherlock, Alternate Four.
Here.
Susanna, so let's have you run the election for the chairperson. So I assume you're asking, right, and you're asking for nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Ray Buckwalter for chairperson.
Can I get a second?
Joe Fiamma seconded it. You wanna see if there's any other nominations before you close?
Any other nominations? No?
You have a motion and a second.
So I'll do a roll call.
That, yep.
You should ask me if I wanna accept the nomination, but yes, okay.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
Thank you all for canceling my parole. So I would ask for a motion for Vice Chair.
Make a motion for Ray Williams.
Bruce Williams.
Bruce Williams.
Bruce, excuse me, Bruce. I'm nervous.
Nothing to be nervous about, Joe. You're sworn in. You're on the hook. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. And a roll call vote.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
Congratulations, Bruce. Okay, so the next order of business is the resolution to appoint the Town, the Land Use Board Attorney. And I don't know how it skipped, but that resolution just disappeared. Here we go. John, do you wanna read these resolutions, or what if I just shared the screen and people can look at them while we walk through them? Does that work?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, so I think I have the ability to do that. Bear with me here. So can everyone see the resolution on their screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So there's a, for those of us who have never been through this before, there's several of these that we'll go through and we can do it, I think, reasonably quickly. This resolution is a resolution appointing John Drill as Land Use Board Attorney. So I need a.
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint John Drill as our attorney. I'll second.
And a roll call.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed it in the past, and hopefully will enjoy it again.
Okay, the next one, did it switch on your screens, everyone, to the next res?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the next one is to appoint our engineering expert for 2020. So now therefore be it resolved that we will appoint Michael S. Finelli P.E. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Who did that? Frank?
Oh.
Yeah, I did it. Somebody else did it too, but.
Okay, as long as Susanna has it, that's fine. And then a roll call?
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
The motion carries. Congratulations, Mike. You even got voted for by a dog, I think, in the background there.
That was actually my, my dog was voting till he voted yes.
Yes. Sounded like an R, not an A, but that's okay. All right. The next order of business is to appoint our board planning expert. So Kendra, welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. This resolution appoints Kendra, it's, is it Lele?
Leely.
Leely. It'll take me about a year to get that right, but okay, Kendra.
It's all good.
And so Kendra agreed to join us. She has expertise in obviously in planning, but she's also been recognized as a master in the affordable housing. I'm not sure I get the terminology exactly right, but will be a great asset for us because that's probably the most complicated thing we deal with, so. With that brief introduction, and you could actually maybe talk to the board a little bit when we get through this and just give us a little bit of a rundown of your background if you.
Absolutely, sure.
Do that, but we'll get through this first. I need a motion, I need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Kendra Leely as our planning expert. I'll second.
And a roll call.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
Carrie, welcome aboard Kendra. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I really do look forward to working with all of you in 2021.
Very good. The next resolution is electing and employing the Board Secretary for 2021. We're nominating, or we're, the resolution is for Susanna Caris to be continued as Board Secretary, so I'll need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Second. Very old second.
I think Frank beat you to it, but Susanna, you can decide. Roll call.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
Motion carries. Welcome back, Susanna.
Thank you.
The next resolution is designating newspapers for our legal advertising, and it probably hasn't changed, but it's usually.
Express Times and the Star.
Express Times and Star Ledger. Thank you. I had to scan down through there. So we're designating the Express Times and the Star Ledger as our official newspapers for legal advertisements. This is consistent with what we've done in the past, so I'll need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Thanks, Mark.
Second.
Thank. Who did that?
Fiamma.
Oh, thanks, Joe. Mike Finelli's little box lit up, so I said, Mike, you can't do that, but that's okay. So we got it. Roll call vote.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. The next resolution is for the meeting schedule for 2021. I think this was also published earlier, but we're still in the second Thursday of each month, so January 14th, February 11th, and so on. I don't know when the League of Municipalities is, sometime in September, October, something like that. We might have to make an adjustment, but.
It's normally in November, but we'll figure it out when we get there.
Exactly. We don't even know if that'll be, that'll happen at this point. So right now, we're, I think all of these are the second Thursday of every month, correct? There's no exceptions.
Correct.
So I'll need a motion to adopt the schedule.
Gary Hill motions.
Thanks, Gary. I'll second it. Roll call.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next resolution is just establishing, I think I went backwards, sorry. The next resolution is just establishing charges that we impose for copies of schedules and minutes and things like that. It's just to defer cost to the township when people come in and ask for hard copies of things.
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
Gary Hill, second.
And roll call.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next resolution is adopting our rules and procedures for 2021, which are almost exactly the same as the rules and procedures for 2020 and 2019 and 2018 and so on. I think there was a minor change to the date of the meeting, and maybe some minor change because we have virtual meetings now, John, to deserve.
So there's nothing in there about the virtual meetings because there's a, there's now regulations from the DCA on that. So if we're still right now in this COVID-19 emergency, and if we stay in it, these emergency regulations allow us to meet like this. So I don't think it's, the regulations apply. There's a resolution that the board's supposed to adopt, and I will draft that resolution for the board's next meeting to cover that, but it's basically what the board's been doing in any event. The other change I made was technically under the statute. And I had a situation come up in a municipality which will remain nameless, where there was a board member who missed a bunch of meetings, and the board member didn't ask to be excused, so he didn't have any excuses. And then the Township Committee basically removed him for cause. The board was upset, and the board member was upset, but he hadn't followed the statute. So I got a little concerned because the statute technically says the board has to excuse. So I went in and I reworded the, the excuse, the excused provision. If a board member wants to get excused, they should call the chair and/or the secretary to tell them, but then the chair at the meeting should have a motion made by the board to excuse the person, because what I would, I'm not saying it would happen, but I saw it happen in this other municipality in a slightly different context. But let's say that the board members that raised excusing them, and the Township Committee decides that they wanna get rid of the board member, and since the board didn't excuse them, technically, they wouldn't have lawful excuses. So I don't think it's adding a big procedure. It's just dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Yeah, so in the past, people have just emailed me or whatever and said, hey, I can't make it tonight. And I usually say, no, no issue. You're excused. We dock your pay for that evening, and that's about the end of it. But, you know, I guess going forward, when we do excuse someone, when we do the roll call, we'll just do a quick, you know, board vote to confirm that they've been excused.
And you know what this other municipality does now? After they take the roll, if anyone's not there or absent, then the chair either says it, or the chair asks the Board Secretary, has anyone, either like, this person called me, they want an excused absence, and asks the Board Secretary, has anyone called you for an excused absence? And anyone who's called for an excused absence, they make a motion to excuse all those absences, unless someone wants to hold one out.
Gotcha. Makes sense. Okay. So John sent this, or Susanna, or someone sent the rules out to everyone because I didn't want you to have to vote to adopt rules that you haven't seen yet in some cases or probably haven't read. So I'm sure everybody read these from beginning to end and studied them. Not, but you have them. If you have any questions, just let us know. John, John's the resident expert on this, and I'm sure he can answer them. So with that, I'll ask for.
And Susanna sent them out. The changes were redlined.
Okay, good. So if you memorized them before, you only have to look for the red lines, and you're good. So with that, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the rules for 2021.
And a second.
Gary Hill, second.
Thanks, Gary. Roll call.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chicello.
Yes.
Frank Marqueta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
And Mark Skudarian.
Yes.
And the motion carries. And the next thing on the agenda is approving the minutes from December 10th. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? I think, I don't know if I have the latest version, John, because there were some changes. I think we were missing a resolution.
Right, so Susanna, why don't you explain what was missing and what you've added to this last version? Susanna sent the version to me. Everyone else hasn't seen it, but she can read these corrections into the record tonight.
So it was on page three, and it's right up, it's the second, we added another paragraph after the first one, and it reads, "A motion was made by Gary Hill and second by Mark, by Frank Marqueta to adopt Resolution Number 202007 memorializing to grant the extension following a roll call vote by the board members who were eligible to vote on the matter." So we just included the resolution number that it was.
And that's the only, that's the only change that was needed?
Yeah. The paragraph on top of that has a couple changed words also, but the change was to add the fact that there was a resolution adopted that night memorializing the grant of the extension. Not simply you voted to grant the extension, but you also voted to adopt the resolution.
Gotcha. Okay, does anyone else have any changes, corrections, or amplifications or anything regarding the December 10th meeting? regarding the December 10th meeting? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the minutes with the changes that were just read into the record.
Gary Hill motion.
Jeremy Blunt second.
And roll call.
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chichella.
Yes.
Frank Marchetta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
Yes.
Jeremy Blunt.
Yes.
Bill Cunyak. And Pam Pestles.
Yes.
And the motion carries. This, this could almost be a record fast reorganization meeting. So the next thing on the agenda is we have an extension of time requests from the Beatty Minor Subdivision, which was case number 2019 dash oh four, lot 20, lot 17, comma 17 dot oh one and 19 South Main Street. How do you like that, John? I read all the detail. You like that, right?
I like that. Yes, I do.
All right. Now there's a couple of documents that came along with this that I scanned into my notes here. The first one is a letter.
You can skip that. Go to the next.
Okay. The second one is, oh, that's on the rules. You want this.
There we go.
Okay. So I guess-
So Carl Pearson, I believe, is present. And this does take a little bit of an explanation. So first, why don't we start? Is Mr. Pearson here? Is he present?
Let's unmute him because I don't know-
Can you stop the share for a second?
Yeah.
So I can get a vote. Okay.
Mr. Pearson, wave your hand. I thought I saw you.
He, he's unmuted.
There he is, there he is. Oh, he's unmuted.
Yeah.
He's good.
Oh, Ray must, okay.
I want to start, the history is, so Mr. Pearson on behalf of himself and Carol Beatty, his sister, am I correct, Mr. Pearson?
Correct. She is deceased now, though.
Right, correct. They applied, well, he applied and the board granted in the beginning of the year on January nine, 2020, by a resolution that was memorialized on March 12, 2020. And this date is incredibly important, as you will hear. If this resolution had been adopted in February, I don't think the board would be able to grant Mr. Pearson the extension he's looking for and he would have had to reapply. And I'll explain this, but fortuitously, because the resolution wasn't granted, wasn't adopted until March 20th, there is a, the COVID-19 Extension Act covers him. So this was a minor subdivision, but it had a, a bunch of variances in it. And it would have been a shame to have the board have to hear the case all over again. The board granted a C two variance from the lot area requirement, a C two variance from the minimum lot depth requirement, a C two variance from the minimum lot frontage requirement, a C one variance from the front yard setback requirement, a C one variance from the accessory building to other buildings variance, a C one variance for accessory building distance to a rear line requirement and the minor subdivision approval. This was all memorialized in a 15-page resolution, Resolution 202001. Now, because it's a minor subdivision, unlike other approvals, which are just governed by the board's own terms, you know, the board says you have six months to revise your plans and get them signed unless you get an extension. And if someone comes in for an extension, the board, there's a standard to follow, but there's no maximum the board can grant it. Site plan approval, same thing, that the board normally has a condition says if you don't pull a permit within a year, and then if after you get your first permit, if you don't complete construction within a year, unless you get an extension. And again, there's standards to follow under case law, but there's no maximum. Well, in the case of a minor subdivision, the municipal land use law says NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash forty-seven D, as in David, that the applicant has 190 days from the adoption of the resolution to either record the deed or record subdivision plat. Now this resolution specifically says that it'd have to be a recorded deed, not a recorded subdivision plat. And the 190 days has expired. There's another statute within section 47, 47F, as in Frank. It says the board may extend the 190 day period. And there's another statute, 47G, that says they can extend it up to a year. However, there's limited grounds. The grounds for an extension of this 190 day period are if the applicant proves that he was barred directly or indirectly because of a delay in obtaining some other governmental approval. So in reading Mr. Pearson's letter, it doesn't look like there's another government approval that delayed him. It looks like that he was delayed because he hadn't made all the changes in the drawings that were required by the resolution following Mike Finelli's January three memo. So if that, if those were the facts, Mr. Pearson would have to reapply to the board and you have to have a do-over. However, because of the COVID-19 emergency, the legislature adopted a, an amendment to the municipal land use law, forty colon fifty-five D dash one thirty-six point ten. And one thirty-six point ten says that if there's an approval in effect as of March nine, 2020, then the board, it, it can be extended until the end of the emergency. So because, and the, the date, according to the statute, is the date the resolution's adopted, not the date the board voted to approve it. So even though the board approved, voted to approve the application on January nine, 2020, because the resolution wasn't adopted until March 12, 2020, and the state of emergency started on March nine, 2020, all the board would have to do if it wants is make a motion to extend Mr. Beatty's minor subdivision approval to X. Now, Mr. Beatty, how much time do you need now to get this thing filed?
Uh, it's Carl Pearson.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Carol, Carol Beatty, my sister passed away.
I am so sorry. I knew that. I'm so sorry. I apologize.
I, I would be more than happy to try and attempt to give you a date. However, all I need from either you or the engineer is what-
Okay, you ready for this?
Is missing.
Right. You're not getting it from me. So if it's engineering, you gotta get it from Mr. Finelli. But Mr. Pearson, this is not a, I'm not intended as an insult in any way, but I think you're being penny wise and pound foolish by not getting an attorney to do this for you. Because the attorney would know exactly what to do. I'm not your attorney. I represent the board. So I, I don't want it, I don't want to get involved in this in case you have some other problem. So if it's, if it's a plan change that you need, you gotta get it from Mr. Finelli. But if it's the mechanics of what you're supposed to do, just, just get a land use attorney. It'd be worth the money to have the person do it. And I say, Mr. Chairman, in light of what Mr. Pearson is saying, maybe you should extend this at least 90 days.
Yeah, Mr. Pearson, you've been working with, with our engineer, Mike Finelli on this. I, I understand. I, Mike, you guys have been working offline to get this done?
Yeah, post approval, compliance, or whatever you'd like to call it. Yes.
So, um, I guess, Mike, maybe you might be the authority, the best authority to give us an estimate of how much time would be needed. You, you might be the closest person to this with some expertise in terms of what's still outstanding.
Well, uh, that's probably fair to say. And I think Mr. Pearson will be happy to hear this and we've gone back and forth with emails and so forth. He's literally ready to go as far as getting this recorded. It just, the, there was really two final issues that came up and we had gone back and forth with his, with his engineer on deed descriptions, plan changes and so forth. And if Van Cleef Engineering was his engineer. And it really came down to two things. The clock ran out, hence the issue and the reason he's here tonight. And it was a question of escrow. The escrow's been taken care of. He's here tonight to get the extension. Should he be granted the extension? To be honest with you, there is nothing that would prevent him from filing those deeds.
Right, Mike, he doesn't know how to file the deeds, right? Okay, so if you're willing to, to do that, that's up to you. I'm, I don't want to, that, that's overstepping my bounds. If you want to-
No, I'm not filing these. I'm saying 90 days, which I, did you mention 90 days, John?
Yeah, I suggested 90 days.
90 days is more than enough time to get this taken care of.
Just in case he's going to try to do this himself without getting someone else involved to help him.
Gotcha. Thanks. Thank, thank you.
I got, can I-
Mr. Pearson, are, would you, under the cir-, based on what our professionals are advising the board, would you be happy with a 90-day extension? Do you think that's adequate time?
Absolutely. I can get it done and let, much less than that. I just got one question. For me to file the deeds at the courthouse, I needed the-
You need them signed by the chairman and the board secretary.
Chair and the secretary to sign the deeds and that, that's what I need to do in order to file the deeds.
Right, that's, that's your next step. So you have, what you would do is you would submit the deeds to the board secretary original with the two signature lines and you'd send a copy to me and a copy to Mike. I will review the deeds as to form. And if they set, and if they're acceptable, I will put, I have a stamp that says reviewed and approved by board attorney as to form, subject to township engineer review of the meets and bounds description. Then Mike looks at those deeds. He reviews the meets and bounds description. And then if he signs off on it, then the board, then Mike will tell the board secretary for her to sign off and she'll call up Ray and they'll make arrangements for Ray to sign. So the two signatures on the deeds are Ray's and Susanna's, but those people are not going to put those signatures on there unless I've reviewed and approved it as to form and Mike has reviewed and approved the meets and bounds.
Okay.
Okay. So it sounds to me like this should be able to be easily done within 90 days. I can sign something in about 10 seconds. And I know you guys will look at this and do the due diligence to make sure.
We've already reviewed the meets and bounds of the, the early drafts that were submitted and then they're, and they're fine. But, but we'll give it the official okay. Like I said, 90 days should be more than enough time.
So Mr. Pearson, you, you're happy with the 90-day extension that Mr. Drill's recommending?
Absolutely. Well, my one final question and then I'll, then I'll be happy. I've submitted what I think is the finals, finals and Susanna has a copy or I think Mike Finelli has a copy. Do I need to resubmit them again?
Okay. I don't know what you're talking about. Final finals, what? You've submitted the deed?
We, we, correct. We submitted the deeds for, for the properties and we submitted the drawings, the survey drawings for the property, the final-
Susanna, do you have deeds from him?
Yeah, I do. And I believe Mike has them as well.
Yeah. So I'm actually looking at them right now. Yeah, I got.
So Mike is saying that the, the, hi- his piece, the, the bounds and whatever.
Meets and bounds.
Meets and bounds are good. So John, if you, if you, if you review them for form and that's acceptable, then we're good to go and we'll sign off on it.
Correct. So who's sending them to me?
I could send them to you.
Okay.
Very good.
Is, can you scan them? Scan each one as a separate document. You can send me one email with all the attachments. Okay?
So I'm going to ask someone to make a motion that we extend
The minor subdivision approval.
Subdivision approval by 90 days, which should be more than enough time.
You know, so hold on. We're talking 90 days from tonight, not 90 days from when it expired.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. That's the motion, right?
Yeah, I don't even know when it expired. I know it was issued on March 12th and it would have expired.
190 days after. It's too much of a-
I don't know what that date is, but then we have the COVID loophole, which-
Exactly. Just get the thing, right.
Has, is miraculously, uh, within three days, we, we meet that. So that's fortuitous. So I'm going to make a motion that we extend the nine, 90 days from the date of this meeting.
Right. So it's going to go to April 14th, April 14th, 2021.
Okay, thank you. So we had a motion from Gary, I believe?
Yes.
I'll second Gary's motion.
All right. Thank you.
Jeremy.
That sounds like Jeremy, yeah. And a roll call vote?
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chichella.
Yes.
Frank Marchetta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Fiamma.
I am recused from this.
And Mark Scuderi.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. Mr. Pearson.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. If Fiamma's recused.
Oh, we have to call first alternate. Yes.
Jeremy, Jeremy Blunt.
Yeah.
Wait, timeout.
This is not a D, Frank. This is a C.
No, no, no. I just want to, not that I have a problem, Jeremy, will you be a number one alternate? But I thought the mayor assigned. I just want to make sure you have it right because I know John's a stickler for the right people.
Fiamma is a class four. He's not an alternate.
No, 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 no. You're asking Jeremy as the number one. He wasn't assigned number one. I know you're going to want to make sure you have the right person voting.
Correct. Just hold on for a second. I thought that's why-
Just went through that list and that's what it was on the list.
Jeremy's the one.
What's that?
Jeremy's number one on the list.
Correct.
But wasn't, Joe was number one before, right?
Listen, you ready for this? Frank? All I can work off.
John, I was at the reorg, John. I was at the reorg meeting. I was telling you what the mayor said. If you want to listen to it, it's up to you. It wasn't my suggestion. The mayor said to put Andrea in Joe's former position. I'm just relaying what the mayor said in the meeting.
Okay, Frank, I know I was not at that meeting. Okay? So what Susanna and I worked off is what Lisa gave us. That's why I said in the beginning, we, this thing took, I'm not going to, this thing took seven drafts, okay?
As long as you think it's legal, I don't, I'm not scared. I want to make sure you got it the right way.
I'm trying to tell you, I have no idea. This is, that's why I said in the beginning, after we did all this, if anyone thinks this is wrong, say something. You're, if you think it's wrong, then we're going to have to fix this thing, but there's nothing we can do about it tonight other than-
Well, I suggest you watch the video then. That's all.
All right, this, could you see the, the, the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is what, this, what I understand is this was provided by Lisa based on the results of the reorganization meeting. So that's all, I mean, I-
Yeah, from my conversations with Lisa, I think, um, I think somebody reached out to Andrea, I believe. I think it was a Brian about this issue.
No, they reached out to Andrea about getting a full voting position. Not about alternate one or alternate four.
Well, Frank, why would they, uh, there's four alternates or three, why would they bump it from, from coming from nowhere to, you know, make her an alternate one? That's not how it was done in the past.
Well, actually it's been done like that many times, but that's not my choice. That's Bob's choice. It wasn't my recommendation.
At the end of the day, it's the mayor's prerogative, but what matters here is what actually happened in the township reorganization meeting. So we'll have to go back and look at that. I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, like I said, I don't, it's not that I, I don't, it's not any preference of mine. I'm just telling you what happened in the meeting. That's all. You guys decide what you want to do, but that's-
Somebody will have to go back to the actual township reorg. Lisa, I'm sorry, Susanna, can you check with Lisa? And just have her verify what actually she's giving us from the, from the-
Let's, let's not even have her verify verbally. Let's get a copy of the minutes of the township reorganizational meeting. Whatever those minutes say, that's what, if this is wrong, then we'll have to fix it next month.
Yeah, we can address it next month, but in the meantime, Mr. Pearson's sitting here on the edge of his chair, waiting to see what's going to happen. And so this is administrative.
That way it's covered?
Yeah, I think-
Just have everybody vote.
Yeah, I think this, because of the circumstances, normally you wouldn't do this because the, the municipal land use law says only regular members or alternates that are filling in vote. But why don't Susanna go back? Let's hear who made the motion, who seconded it. Make sure that those two people are without question, you know, properly seated members and then do a roll call of, of everyone other than anyone who has to recuse. So Fiamma is obviously recused, so you won't call him. So can we go, let's do a retake on this. Who made the motion?
Gary Hill made the initial motion.
Okay, and-
Jeremy Blunt seconded Gary Hill's original motion.
So I'd like someone other than Jeremy Blunt, just in case, to second the motion. Hill makes the motion.
Mark Scuderi will second it.
Okay. Uh, let me just-
I think Joe had it, but either way.
Yeah, I, I want okay, Hill and Scuderi, right?
Hey, quick question.
Okay, so Susanna, can you call the roll, please?
Paul Beam.
Yes.
Joseph Chichella.
Yes.
Frank Marchetta.
He's going to say yes.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Cullen.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Mark Scuderi.
Yes.
Jeremy Blunt.
Yes.
Bill Cunyak.
Yes.
Pam Pestles.
Yes.
Andrea Sherla.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Sorry for the confusion. Sorry, Mr. Pearson, for the confusion, but there was a unanimous vote including all four alternates. So the motion carries. And you'll have a 90-day extension. John, we'll do a resolution and that resolution will be adopted in the February meeting, correct?
Correct. And let's just say though, that that should not hold up the review and the signing of his deeds.
Correct.
And I will work with Susanna to get from Lisa the minutes of the meeting. And if this has to be changed.
Yeah, we could just fix that in the next meeting. That's- Yeah, we could just fix that in the next meeting. That's not a, that's not a crisis, but until we have the actual information. As the township clerk gave us this list, and I assume that it was correct. So. And also, John, I guess I'll sign all of the resolutions that we just did for this meeting. And do you need actual original signatures? Or can I scan those and send those to you and Susanna?
You, yeah, you can scan them.
Okay. So I'll do that and send those over to you. So, um, Mr. Pearson, thank you for your patience. A little bit of, little, a little bit of excitement there, but your motion for the extension carried. I think Mr. Finelli is telling us that the lots and means and bounds or whatever are all set. So if John Drill is happy with the form of the recorded deed, then the signature should be able to be done easily within a week to 10 days at the outside. So I think your path is finally clear and my condolences on your sister's passing. The last thing that we have, let's see, I think that was, we have two discussion points on the agenda. Uh, reexamination of master plan and discussion of industrial build out. So this is when the fun starts, I guess. So as, as most of you probably realized, Dawn Marie Condes has retired her position on the board. And Dawn Marie had volunteered to chair a committee to reexamine the master plan. I believe that actually is due in 2021. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, that's correct.
So by, by law, the township is required to review the master plan in 2021. And I guess just reassert that it is as we want it to be.
Well, it's, it's, it's a reexamination of the master plan and the development regulations. And when the board does the reexamination, the, this reexamination report is actually supposed to say what the board wants to do. Does the board want to leave things like they are? Or does the board want to change anything? That's the, that's the purpose of the reexamination report.
So Dawn had a subcommittee because we can't have, on a committee, we can't have a quorum. So I think we had a subcommittee that had three board members. The quorum is five, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't recall, I think, uh, Bill, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, the subcommittee, Dawn had, Dawn Marie had formed it, but we had never actually met yet. That's about when the, when the pandemic shut up, shut everything down.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm actually curious, John, does, does that affect our timing?
No, it's every 10 years and it does not, because they have these emergency regulations where the board's allowed to meet virtually, everything's supposed to continue along the way.
Okay.
So unlike applicants who get extensions, so development and the economy doesn't come, you know, to more of a halt than it is. Things that the board has to do, they, they don't get continued. They are still on the same time deadlines.
Okay.
So it's the idea of keeping the end in mind here, the goal in mind here. I think this discussion point. The first thing we need to understand is what, what is our drop dead date on, on having something done? And what is that deliverable? I mean, what do we do? Do we deliver a document to the township committee?
Yeah. So, so generally what most boards do is they have their planning expert meet with subcommittee, kind of organize things, make some suggestions. Subcommittee ultimately, if the board delegates this to the subcommittee, the subcommittee is driving the bus. But a lot of the underlying work is done by the planner. And then the subcommittee would make recommendations on what this report would look like. Then the report, if the subcommittee is happy with it, would then get distributed to the board. If the board wanted to, we could go into a closed session where I could give attorney client privileged advice when you go through the draft, but then ultimately this is a, it's not a master plan element. So it doesn't have to be adopted after a public hearing. But it has to be adopted in public and for good form and transparency purposes. I highly recommend that you then have the planner present it at a public meeting. It's not a public hearing. But it, and it's up to the board if you want to allow questions other than just having the public listen. And against, for transparency purposes, why would you not want to have, you know, the public have the right to ask questions or make comments or whatever? Then you would vote to adopt it. And then it goes to the township committee, neighboring municipalities, the county planning board, and the state office of planning advocacy. Now, the date that it's due. It's the one thing I forgot to do today. I wanted to see the, it's 10 years from the last either adoption of a master plan or a reexamination report. So Kendra, do you by any chance have the date that that last reexam was done?
I do. It was actually an amendment to the land use plan, which was July 11th, 2011.
Okay. So you have till July 11th of 2021 to get this adopted.
So we basically have no time.
No, this is, this is doable.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I'm not saying it's not doable, but we, I mean, in terms of meetings, there's very few meetings between now and July 11th. So.
Well, put it this way, you may have to have some, some meetings that you otherwise wouldn't have if you didn't, right? If you had no applications on the agenda, you'd cancel the meeting. Well, you're going to have this thing on the agenda. Again, my recommendation, at least for one closed session and then add a meeting when it gets adopted. But the board might want to, you know, have additional meetings on it and might not want to just have the subcommittee go off on its own. That's, you guys have to decide what you want to do there, Ray.
Yeah. And I, I know Frank has communicated to me that the township committee didn't, didn't put in a, a large line item budget for a master plan review and, and analysis. So, um, that's not to say, I mean, you know, I, I, I guess at some point that the process gets driven uh, by the public and by the board to some degree, but we also want to keep in mind that at least from the state, point of view of the township, Frank, you can correct me if I'm wrong, from the point of view of the township committee, this wasn't something that warranted a large line item budget in order to, in order to get it done.
Right.
So, so put it this way, the township committee, by saying that is saying, look, we do not envision a master plan amendment. This should be a reexamination report. If in the reexamination report, you guys want to recommend that there be a master plan amendment, that's your prerogative. But they did not put money in there to have an actual amendment and the law does not require you to do that. What they put money in that budget for is to have, is to have your current master plan and your current development regulations examined.
Okay. And so this is typically done by forming a subcommittee that works with the township planner to review the current master plan and then make recommendations to the land use board, at which time the land use board will craft or, or amend a recommendation to the township committee.
Correct. By adopting.
July.
By July 11th.
But.
By what?
It wasn't a, there was a suggestion, I don't know if you made it, John, or somebody, that maybe we just have extra meetings with the whole land use board. I think everybody would want to be involved.
Listen, it, the, I didn't make any recommendations on which way you guys do it. That's up to you guys. That's what I said in the beginning.
Well, I don't know how everybody else feels. Uh, I think when we're reviewing the master plan, it might be a good idea to have everybody.
Uh, I was thinking about this a little bit since I think Frank used to just to putting it on the agenda, actually.
Yeah.
So I was thinking about this a little bit. And there's two things that occurred to me. Number one, of, obviously we have a, a very competent board of people to look at this and review it. But the other thing is how, how do we get public input? Um, I think if we put something on the agenda for a land use board meeting, suggesting that we're going to make a presentation regarding the sort of, um, overall zoning, that we might get some public participation and some public input. I mean, that's something that I think is necessary at some point. Not just saying, okay, we figured this all out and here's what it is, folks. But before that, how do we get input from the public? Uh, in terms of, you know, our recommendations.
I, I think that obviously public input is important, but I mean, one, one of the reasons why you have a subcommittee is so that you can have some discussions, which the subcommittee proceedings don't have to be public. So you might want to grind a few things out before you, you know, before you start soliciting the public input. I don't know. Yeah. My personal opinion, we've done subcommittees in the past and like you say, it's what's like, things are done really not in the public. I think better if you're going to review the master plan, that we do everything with the public view.
Yeah. Well, we, we certainly don't have a budget to redo the master plan. But if, if we go through this process and find out that we have incongruities with, you know, what, what the goals are, then we might say, okay, at some point down the road, we have to make changes. We're, we're talking about a reexamination report, not an amendment at this point. We don't have the budget to do an amendment.
Correct.
I'm thinking, and John, you know, we spoke with John, I'm thinking Kendra does the, does the examination and presents it to the land use board. And then we review that in public session.
Yeah. Okay.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. Um, if, if a subcommittee doesn't make sense, and I don't know if you have workshop meetings or if we could have a workshop meeting prior to your public meeting, um, to meet with the board members. I could go through in probably one or two meetings, an outline of what a reexamination report typically includes. The questions that I would need responses and, and reaction to from the board members. And I think that dialogue, or at least that timeframe, um, probably would be the next month. I would say the next two to three meetings and, and then a drafting of the reexamination report. Probably the fourth meeting into the month. So I think we can stay on that, that timeframe, but that's an option too. You could have a workshop meeting. Um, and then we could, and then we can certainly, um, have a discussion. Let's say in March, April, May, in the public realm, not necessarily a hearing, but folks are, folks would be able to, um, take a look at what we're proposing from a draft perspective.
And I just want to be clear about something. It doesn't matter if you call it a workshop meeting, planning board meeting. Once there's a quorum, it's on notice. It's a meeting. And everyone's in, the public's entitled to be there. And listen, the board doesn't have to let them participate, but that's up to the board. But that's a meeting on notice.
Yeah. My, my intuition, based on the last time we did this, is that trying to put the onus on a subcommittee of a few people to do this outside the normal course of events is probably an ambitious, um, goal. I don't know how many people on the board would be willing to volunteer to do that or take it on. I would, you know, I would sort of agree with Frank that we just do it in the course of our normal meetings. Or if necessary, maybe we even need to have an extra meeting somewhere along the line, just to keep the whole thing transparent. Kendra, how, how, I mean, I, I'm thinking if we put this on the agenda for a meeting in March or April.
No, 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 no. You put February.
Yeah, put it on for February. I will, yep, I agree, John. I put it on for February. I will be prepared to run everybody through uh, the different sections of the reexamination report. Um, I probably actually send you, uh, information about a week ahead of time. So you have time to digest it. Uh, and then what I think I'm going to do is probably outline, uh, what your existing land use plan element says and, and your, and your other ones for that matter, um, and, and be able to bullet point things, uh, for everybody. Uh, so that, you know, it would be good, certainly prudent that everybody reads through the, the previous, uh, master plan elements. Uh, so they get a flair for what it does say. Um, but I think in that particular instance, I, I'm fine. I will be prepared that we can at least start the discussion.
That's fine, Kendra. I was trying to give you a little room because I didn't, you're new. I don't know how familiar you are with.
Is the master plan available electronically? Um, I, I'd venture to say that most of the board members have never seen it.
Yeah, the master plan is absolutely available electronically. Mike Finelli, I know that over the, during the affordable housing stuff. I think I have every piece of the master plan in digital form. I think Kendra now has it from either Mike and from her former employer, CCH, but maybe we can get everything up on the website. Frank, can you, um, connect up with Kendra and Mike? And make sure that every element of the master plan going all the way back, you know, there's like a, a master plan section of the website and everything gets, uh, uploaded?
Sure.
Yeah, there's, there's a few elements that go way back.
And they go way back.
And they go way back, well beyond the 10 years. Um, yep.
But Ray, that's my suggestion is get them up on the website.
Okay. So.
We, um.
So we know we need, we have a, a July deadline to get this done.
By the way, it's July 11th. So.
So it's actually June because our meeting is going to be after that.
Right.
So we have to have this done by June. And it sounds to me like the things we need to do right now is get the master plan up on the website. So our board members can review what we have. Kendra is going to prepare a presentation for the February meeting. So Susanna, you need to put this on February. And we probably need to set aside some time for it. So if we have other things coming along in February, we'll have to be careful not to, you know, overbook the February meeting because this, I'm guessing it's going to take at least an hour in February.
Correct. And Susanna, use the same description you have here, reexamination of master plan and development regulations. And that should be on, quite frankly, every agenda from now until June.
Two, two questions. Uh, can we get a copy of the, of the 2011 reexamination?
It's all going to be put up on the website.
It'll be part of that. And has, is, is, is it differing at all in form in the last 10 years? Or is that a good example of the form of the reexamination?
The, so the 2011 plan was actually an amendment of your land use plan. So it wasn't necessarily a reexamination report. I can, and that's what I wanted to go through with everybody at the next meeting. What exactly is a reexamination report? There are specific, um, questions and items that we look at in a reexamination report. And it, you know, it's, it's, it's actually exactly what it is. It's a report. It's not necessarily an element. So, um, I think I'll be able to kind of give that to you. Uh, if you do, honestly, if you do a search on the web and you put in reexamination report, you, you'll get every municipality in the United, in, in the United States, in, in New Jersey, um, that has done a reexamination report. And I'll get, and you'll get some ideas of, of what really that is. And it can go from honestly, depending upon what the results are on our conversations, it can go from a, a five page document to, in some instances, much longer to a 30 page document. It all depends upon, um, the dialogue and, and the input from the board on this, you know, the answers to the questions and, and the thoughts behind, um, the goals and objectives and what has changed and what hasn't changed.
Okay. Thank you.
And Kendra, the last, there was a reexamination report that was done. And actually it was done in 2012.
Okay.
So we actually, right. So I'm, when we, at the end of this meeting, I'm going to send it to you, but we may have just bought a year.
Okay. Yeah, no, I don't have that. So.
It was adopted, it looks like it was adopted February 21 of 2012. At least this is a draft periodic, ex, reexamination of the master plan and development regulations. This one was done by Carl Hints, well, Carl Hints and Lisa Specka were the authors, but I just have to find out if I can get an adopted copy. Mike Finelli, by any chance, can you shed some light on this?
Well, you know, that's interesting, John, when you, when you said that, I.
Oh, look at that. I have, I have the, I have the adopted version.
I'll, I'll look tomorrow.
Yeah, I have it. I'm, I'm going to email it out.
I'm not going to be able to do it right now.
Mike, I'm telling, I have it. I have it. I'm going to email it to, to you and Kendra and, and the board. I have the adopted one.
Big date, John?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the adoption date, March 14, 2012.
So we have until.
March 14 of 2022.
Actually, probably February, depending on when our meeting would fall, but yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, that's when this board was called the planning board, but it's.
Understood.
Same thing.
So, so the timeline's a little bit easier, but I mean, I don't, I, I, I think we might, might as well go ahead and get it done since we, yeah, have a plan to get it done and not be up against the wall like we are. So we're going to get all the information on the website. Kendra's going to put together a presentation for February. And then we don't necessarily have to fast track this because we have a little more time, but. We won't, we won't form a subcommittee and try to hoist this onto three or four people. We'll just do it as a board. And um, and handle it in public meetings. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yep.
That was a good idea to make.
So the next, the next thing, does anybody have anything else on this, I'm sorry, agenda item before I move to the, the last thing? All right, so the next thing. Frank suggested that we have a discussion about the industrial buildout. It says within Greenwich, but I think what we're really talking about is around Greenwich. But I'll let you lead this discussion, Frank, since this was your topic.
So you recall in our last meeting, I discussed. The all the warehousing buildout surrounding our town. I know a lot of people probably aren't even aware of the proposed warehousing. So we're kind of getting surrounded by a lot of trucks. Anyway, Ray, by the way, I forwarded you research that Mike did for me on the warehousing. So, um, if you want to share that with the land use board as an informational thing.
You mean, right now in real time?
No, no, you don't have to, I mean, you don't have to do it now. I mean, unless anybody wants to start reviewing it, but no. The, the reason I brought this up was. A white township, I saw an article. Where they did an examination of their buildout. Now, in their master plan, they cited two things. They cited maintaining the rural character of the township. Which is in our master plan. And traffic flow. So. One of the issues was, there's a proposed warehouse, a very large warehouse on Route 519. They never did any kind of traffic study on it. And then they looked at their, they looked at their zoning in the buildout and they saw that if they did a full buildout at 519, just wouldn't be able to handle it. They also looked at their zoning. Looking at the, keeping the town rural and it didn't, they felt that it didn't satisfy that aspect of the master plan. So what they did was they lowered the percentage of coverage for each of their industrial zones. To maintain the rural character of the town. So I was thinking, I don't know that we've ever done that. If you look all along Route 173, 78 West, behind the Target Mall. That I believe is all industrial or non-residential zoning. I'm just going to put it out there. If the land use board is interested to do a review, our own review. Of the industrial buildout, see if everything was built out. What would that mean to traffic? And what would that mean to maintaining the rural character of the township?
So that, do you want this as part of the reexamination? Is that what you're saying or a separate thing?
Uh, I was thinking a separate thing. I didn't really have anything to do with the master plan. This is.
Sounds to me like this dovetail, this is part of the master plan, right? I mean, if you really come right down to it.
And it's part of the, a reexamination of the development regulations, right? You're saying if things were developed with permitted uses. That are permitted in the existing zones, what would it look like? What impact would it have, right?
I guess, yeah.
So this is some kind of, of like, basic document that you want done sooner than later. So that Kendra has it when she's asking the board questions and everything.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the purpose of bringing it up here is to see if, what the interest of the, of the board was.
So I think, I think, and don't, I mean, don't let me twist you, what you're doing here, but. It sounds to me like what you're proposing is that we commission a study. To see what the effects of a full buildout would be under the existing zoning. On traffic and the rural character of Greenwich Township. Is that a fair enough statement?
Yeah, that's fair, yes.
I have no idea what that would cost.
I was going to say, what about the budget?
Yeah, I'd say I have no idea what that would cost, maybe.
Yeah, if if it was approved, then we would have to discuss that in our budget meetings at the town committee. I would assume.
Well, why don't you get a proposal, Ray, why don't you ask Kendra to give you a proposal on how much that?
Well, first I want to see if there's.
She's writing it down right now. I mean, Kendra, this has turned out to be a pretty good first meeting so far for you.
I mean, my first. Uh, thing I wanted to tackle was just to see if everybody was interested, if they think it's a worthwhile thing to do.
So can I ask a couple of questions as as you kind of dig into it? You talk about industrial uses and and Mike Finelli certainly knows this better than I do. But my very quick perusal of the zoning ordinance, it appears that the only zone that. Industry, industry or or manufacturing is permitted is the RON zone, which seems like it's a small, not small. It's, it doesn't take up a large piece of the zoning in in the township. Is it more than just industrial or are you thinking?
Now, remember, it's about maintaining rural character, so.
What Frank is trying to say, not to put words in your mouth, is you want non-residential zones.
Yes.
Of non-residential zones, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And if you think about it, it's all about total buildout. So whether it's industrial or if it's. Non-industrial, if it's going to cover X a percentage of a, of a parcel of land. Does that fit in, if we're going to cover 80% of what what's right now a farm? Or what's being farmed, we're going to cover 80% of that. Is that what we think is appropriate for a town that wants to maintain the rural character?
So based on your example of, I think you said white township.
Yeah.
You know, what we want to do is find out what the full buildout on the non-residential zones would look like in terms of traffic. And, you know, the impact on the, you know, rural character of our town. And then, and then depending on the result of that, we might decide to do something. FAR would be one, one solution, but not the only one. There could be many different solutions to that, depending on. You know, what that looks like.
Yeah, that's what, that's what white.
Yeah, what, what, what White did was both FAR and impervious coverage. Those, those are the two. Primary bulk requirements that are going to govern. You know.
Gotcha. So it sounds like that really kind of dovetails with our, you know, master plan review.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. When we, when we meet next month. How about if I give everybody a quick outline of each zoning district, where the non-residential is permitted? What you have currently as far as your coverage limits. And your FAR limits. And a quick analysis of what vacant land is out there, just, just, just raw vacant land. Um, and then, and then we can have that discussion, you know, is, is what we have currently? Just kind of just looking at it from a very 30,000 foot view. Does this make me cringe? Or is this, or is this something that, yeah, you know, this, this, there, there's some, there's some. Pretty good existing standards in there, but maybe we need to, maybe we need to tweak it a little bit. But maybe the, I can give you some more information with with what's existing. And then we can have, you know, that further discussion and say, okay, yeah, we do want to move forward or maybe it's not that big a deal.
I think that makes sense, and then based on how the board feels about that, we, we. I guess we would or would not ask you to give us a quote on doing a more in-depth study as, as Frank has suggested. So we get like a preliminary. Look at what your impressions are based on the current zoning, and then if we think we're at risk. Then we can decide if it's worth recommending, you know, getting a quote for a more in-depth. Study, because I'm guessing that's going to take some resources to do something with that. You know, kind of hypothetical 100% buildout scenario.
Especially on the traffic impact side, for sure.
Okay, does that, does that make sense to you, Frank?
Yeah, that's fine, that makes sense.
Does anybody on the board have any other comments or suggestions or input or?
I have a question. I could see a lot of the, uh, the warehousing that's going up all around us, but Frank, it sounds like you know about more that it's. It's in the pipeline in our neighboring communities than I do. Is that available somewhere or? Yeah, like I just said, I just sent Ray, I asked. Is that what Ray has? Okay. Ray has it now. I asked Mike to do some research for me, so. It has all the proposed stuff out there, everything, so feel free to forward it to the land use board, Ray.
Yep, I'll do that.
It's, Frank, hey Frank?
Yeah.
It's, uh, you're obviously referring to my email response to your questions.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm actually holding, here it is, as a matter of fact. You want me to just forward it to everybody like later tonight or tomorrow morning?
Send it to Susanna and have her distribute it.
I think I already said, I think I sent it to to you and Susanna. I think that's why I just.
Well, Susanna has it or make sure she has it and then have Susanna distribute it to the board.
I, I sent it.
And I know, I shared it with Kendra last week, I guess. Yeah, so, so we had, we spent some time on the phone, kind of going over some of the, some of my answers.
And I just emailed the 2012 reexam report to Mike, Kendra, Ray and Susanna. So Susanna, even, you might as well email that out to the board, just to can see what the reexam looked like in 2012. Even though eventually it's going to be up on the website with the master plan documents.
Okay, so I'll send both out then.
So the answer, one of the answer to your question, Joe, is there's a lot of warehousing proposed.
Yeah, there sure is. Yes, there is.
Sadly enough. The rural character and traffic in our town is not 100% under our control, so. Yeah, well, I wouldn't say zero, but I would say something close to that.
Yeah, less than 25%.
I mean, for years and years, it's been fantastic to live in a town with that, you know, you can, you can swing a cat by its tail and hit 78. And have access to a major, you know, artery to travel, but we're starting to pay the price for that and that all started with the. You know. With the, with the Preservation Act where we were designated a. Not a preservation zone, but a.
Planning.
Planning zone, planning, which is is a. Backwards way to say development zone, so. We had a bullseye on our back ever since that happened, in my opinion, but.
Well, just so you know, the Highlands is doing a, a whole evaluation of some kind of economic impact study. I already talked to John about it, you know, just be careful if they don't start targeting Greenwich as a planning area for economic development.
Uh, we have two, we have two exits on a major artery. It's pretty hard to, it's.
Uh, just afraid they're going to push development towards us. We have to just keep an eye on it.
Well. We're fighting the good fight and everyone's ears, I think we're all kindred spirits in that, so. Unless anybody has anything else, I guess, any other comments on this before we wrap things up?
I'm motionally adjourned.
Yeah, my glass is empty, so I'll second it.
Good job, Ray.
All in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you all so much. Welcome to our new folks and I'll see you in February.
Bye bye.
Be careful.
Okay, good night, guys.
Bye.